A call to order, meeting of the Wilsonville City Council, Monday, November 15th at 7:15 PM. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Linville?
Here.
Counselor West?
Here.
Counsel President Ocravol?
Here.
Counselor Leehan?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Will the city manager please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, we can't hear you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Counsel President Ocravol?
Your Honor, I move to approve the amended agenda.
By the second?
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Thank you, motion passes five to zero. Um, under Mayor's Business, I will point out that our next meeting of the city council will be Monday, December 6th. And there were a lot of meetings this week, um, including one today with the, um, the Chair of Washington County and Cities in Washington County that was regarding, um, some of the homeless services, and they are planning to come to meet with us as a, as a, um, part of Washington County to present a detailed report about that. And I think we'll find it really interesting. I also attended, um, Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. All of the councilors have assignments to go to different committees like this to find out about opportunities, challenges, and things affecting our city. And so this is one with all of the cities in Clackamas County. And Clackamas, the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, I just wanted to report on, what they took a lot of trouble to share with all of the cities, um, is an in-depth review of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, because all of the cities, including Wilsonville, and all of our councilors have been very interested in, in how can we, um, develop services for people experiencing homelessness to address the challenges they are living with, the cha-challenges facing them? And how can we manage resources best to address this, this really big problem? That was a big part of the report from Clackamas County. Um, there, the 2018 Metro Area Affording Affordable Housing Bond Measure was part of the discussion that many of the cities wanted to hear about. And that particular program is one that aims to acquire and build housing opportunities for those who are homeless. The county has a total of over 1,700 housing units in process, with over 300 completed and another 150 in construction. The county staff also reviewed the 2020 Metro Area Supportive Housing Services Measure Program that is funded by an income tax on high-income earners and businesses grossing over $5 million. The purpose of their review is to talk about how that is being implemented through Clackamas County, and as a city in Clackamas County, that is where we fit in. So per a prorated formula based on population, Clackamas County expects to receive about 21% of the proceeds from that tax. And it is put toward wraparound services, not construction. This wraparound service is targeting several aspects of the multilayered issue of chronic homelessness, and that services such as rental assistance, mental health services, addiction recovery, resources for the county's most marginalized population. And so the county's implementation plan that they were describing for all the cities seeks to increase shelter capacity, expand wraparound social services for greater housing stability, and increase all types of outreach for housing placement services with the objective to get people, um, you know, out of that situation and into, um, stable housing and jobs. Um, I did share with the group our interest that we've discussed here of, um, adding potentially some mental health services staff in Wilsonville that could coordinate with all of that, so that we have ready access to these services. And mentioned that our city manager has been talking with the county administrator, uh, Barry Schmidt. And last point I'm going to make about this is that, and I do expect us to have a presentation about it, because these things are all very complicated. Um, and we want to make sure that we design a program that works very well for the, for, for Wilsonville and the people in our community. But I will say that Clackamas County Commissioner Paul Savas, um, described that the next step with regard to Clackamas County is to complete an intergovernmental agreement with Metro. So all three counties are working on this IGA that would span 10 years. And it has taken a lot of time. Um, all the counties are working on it, and I hope they will get that finished soon. So there's more to report on that. Um, I will, would also like to, um, bring up that, um, just a minute, I have a lot of reports here. I have a short proclamation. We have a lot on our agenda today, so I regret taking much time for this report. But it is important to note that Saturday, November 27th, is Small Business Saturday. And so we have a proclamation for this that I would like to read. Whereas the city of Wilsonville celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our area economy and community. And whereas, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, 31.7 million small businesses represent 99% of all firms with paid employees in the United States and are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas, small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 88% of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas, 97% of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, 85% of them also encourage friends and family to do so too. Whereas, 50% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020. And more than 50% of consumers have reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation. And whereas, the city of Wilsonville strongly supports their local small businesses that create jobs, boost our economy, and serve our community. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Julie Fitzgerald, Mayor of the city of Wilsonville, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of the community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Thank you. The, the last, um, item under Mayor's Business is, as you see in your package, we have a contract to approve, which is an extension of the contract for our esteemed city attorney, Barbara Jacobson. Um, I think you've all had a chance to read that contract. And, um, I want to recognize that, um, we've had quite a year with as many of the things I described in Small Business Saturday affected the city as well. And I appreciate Ms. Jacobson's, uh, work this last year in working with, um, all of the factors that affected our city and advocating for great results and getting them as well. So I will entertain a motion to approve the contract. Counsel President Ocravol?
Thank you. Um, I move to approve the extension of Barbara Jacobson's employment agreement as city attorney from November 30th, 2021, to March 31st, 2022, as outlined in the employment agreement.
Do I have a second? Uh, do we have a second? Thank you, Counsel Linville. Is there any discussion, comments? All right, well, I will, oh, Counsel, Counsel President Ocravol?
I just, um, say that I appreciate how this, um, extension allows us to have a continued service, um, with our city attorney. And I'm grateful for, um, the, the future that we have here.
Well, thank you. And, uh, Ms. Jacobson is, is, uh, looking to, uh, transition to some other activities. But I'm glad that she is giving us time for that transition. And as it says in the contract, um, we, we have the chance to continue that as needed. So thank you, everyone. With that, um, I will call for the vote. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. And that brings us to citizen input, or excuse me, the communications portion of our agenda. Our, our first presentation is a Metro update from Counselor Garrett Rosenthal.
All right, it takes a little while to get some of the things that are working here. Um, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be before the council this evening and to talk about a few things that Metro's doing. Um, I try and keep track of what's going on in Wilsonville, since I live, uh, pretty much between Wilsonville and Tuolleton. Um, so I'll try and do this. Uh, I've had some problems in the past booting this up. We're going to give it a shot. Um, and, uh, oh, come on, the slide shows, there we go. Now, how can I, can you still hear me?
Yes, I don't see it yet.
Huh, it showed up on my screen. Okay.
Counselor Rosenthal, this is Ann. Would you like me to share it for you?
Yeah, well, it might as well. It showed up briefly and then disappeared.
That's okay, we're used to all the various Zoom meeting variables.
Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Great, Counsel Rosenthal, take it away.
All right, uh, I was told that if I go on to, uh, well, I don't have, let's see. Uh, a second, my computer decided to show me something different for the moment. That if I go to view, I can enlarge it a little bit. But is that large enough for everybody to see?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, unfortunately, I don't have scrolling capacity.
You could just say advanced slide.
Yeah, you're, you're going to have to advance it. So, uh, like I said, I'm, it's a pleasure to update you on some of the things that are going on in Metro. There's been a lot going on and a lot that is going to be going on over the winter, uh, as we pull out of the, uh, the pandemic. So, uh, next slide, please, first slide. Uh, you just heard a brief report on the supportive housing services. Uh, Mayor Fitzgerald has reported on, uh, what had been presented to the CCC. Uh, and, uh, I just want to highlight a couple of things. Um, all three look, there's two aspects to it. First of all, there's the local, uh, there's the, the intergovernmental agreements, and then there's the local implementation plans. The money comes through Metro. It took a while to get it going, simply because it required a new taxing process. And so the, the primary amount of money are expected to come in with this next tax season. So we're getting rolling, there is money available for preliminary expenditures and getting the process plan. But we expect the full amount of revenues to be available to the county, to Clackamas County, starting, uh, you know, as the tax revenues start coming in this next season. Uh, we're, we're still in the process of negotiating the final IGA's. Already, many people, or I should say dozens at least, have people have gotten increased supportive housing, they've been moved into some housing, and are starting to provide services. Uh, and this, I have to mention, this also pairs with the housing bond, which was passed in 2018. And the timing is actually particularly good, because as housing units are coming onboard, we're also able to provide people with housing. Uh, you know, the supportive services are nearly as effective as you don't have housing to provide for people. So the next slide, please. The Affordable Housing Bond, well, this is, uh, it's a work in progress, but it's so far seems to be a fairly good success. About 57% of the housing that was originally projected is sort of in the process pipeline. And about 37% of the funds have been expended, uh, or committed, I should say, at this point in time. And that's due to lower bond rates and a couple of other reasons. There, a couple of them, the Rockwood Village became the first one in 2018 to welcome residents. The Mary Anne opened about a month ago, and it's, uh, fully, it's the first one, it's in, uh, Beaverton, downtown Beaverton. It's the first one to fully open. There's another one in, um, Gresham, uh, and I forget the name of it right offhand. And then the Viewfinder in Tigard is expected to welcome residents this fall. There's other ones being planned, there's one being planned by the city of Tuolleton along Boons Ferry Road, just north of North Wilsonville. So, and there's a, a number of units being planned in the process. I think overall, there's 600 in the process and 1,200 that are sort of in the permitting and planning stage. And, and that means units. It's important to note that 50% of those units, plus or minus a couple percentage, are allocated for people who have less than 30% of the adjusted mean income. And the remaining 50% are for those that are 60% or less. And a substantial number are family-oriented. It depends on the unit, each one slightly different. But in all cases, or in most cases, there will be family units with two or three bedrooms, so that we can actually get families, uh, out of the, out of the streets. Um, next slide, please. The Parks and Nature Bond, now that's another interesting thing, a fairly, it's been a fairly good success. I just want to note that two parks recently, or I should say will formally open in, within the next month. And these are parks similar to Graham Oaks, which is a lovely place. I'm, you know, that graces, uh, Wilsonville. The, the Newell Creek Canyon, uh, will open, I believe, the 7th of December, and that's in Oregon City. It's a beautiful canyon, has waterfalls, it has, it's the first park that Metro has that's going to have a, a trail bike facility. Uh, then there's also the Chalum Ridge Park, which is opening near Gaston, south of Hillsborough, which is also, it's a little bit distant from, of course, Wilsonville. But it's worth the trip. It's a, about 1,000 acres of high ridge top that, on a good day, has really wonderful views. It used to be farms and then forest. So these, that'll be opening, I believe, the 13th of December. So these are two new things. The, um, so the, these are the ones that are opening. The, um, a template for the local share IGA's was approved in early November, so by the Metro Council. And this is, this was meant to streamline the process for all the cities, so that they can apply for and put projects forward for local share, uh, of which there's about $92 million available in this coming cycle. Next, uh, slide, please. The Parks and Nature Levy, now, of course, we're building all these parks, but these parks, in, in many cases, and they're very wonderful places. They're going to improve access, they're going to improve habitat, protect water quality. The Newell Creek is a headwaters area, so is the Chalum Ridge. But we have to, uh, we're going to have to come up for a renewal of a levy, because these need continual maintenance. And in some cases, they re, they require a lot of rehabilitation. So it's one of the big issues that's going to occur, these things. You have to keep, get invasive species out, you have to make sure that the park stays in good conditions, and you have to make the access available to all. And plus, there's nature education programs. So this is, uh, a part of the, uh, community grants and partnerships that better can continue. This levy will look at sometime in the, within the intermediate future, probably an extension of the current levy, just to provide for the continued maintenance of these parks, so they don't sort of revert into, to sort of wild berry, berry patches. Next slide, please. Garbage recycling, well, as you know, I mean, you hear a lot about it, about the, the trash on the streets in Portland, and it's become an eyesore, and it's a bit of a problem in terms of Portland, downtown Portland's revitalization. It's not as much of an issue out here in our district. But what happens to Portland also affects us regionally, and it affects the sort of livability of the area. So at the height of the pandemic, we were reduced to, to, to rid crews, rid patrols, and we got back to about a, it was about a 70-day turnaround when somebody reported illegal dumping. We've now got it up to five crews, I think it's six, and I think we're down to about 13 business days, which means we get to, get to a site and clean it up within, I think it's now down to 11 days. The important thing about this is that it's important to realize that about, oh, approximately 60% of these dumping zones are not front, uh, associated with the homeless camps. They're associated with people who see these, this, certain opportunities, either they have COVID fears to put trash in places they shouldn't. It avoids some fees, but it causes a problem for everybody, and it reflects badly upon some of the people in the camps who actually try and maintain their system fairly well. That isn't to say there are problems, but we, we're improving on this, and it's, uh, moving forward. Uh, next slide, please. Um, before I go on to construction career pathways, one of the things I just want to mention is, you know, the requirement for certain larger businesses and certain establishments to do, um, food waste, uh, collection and composting. That is to say, the composting will be done at a central location, but to collect food waste so that we can generate, uh, so we can generate recyclable fuel, actually, it's, we'll, we'll be generating methane, we'll be composting it at a, at the Portland facility. That deadline was extended to March on 2022, and all the cities have adopted the necessary ordinances to require certain businesses that generate more than a certain amount of food waste to actually then collect it and then centrally process it, so that we're not, uh, just wasting food and we're not filling up the landfills as fast. Um, now, moving on to construction career pathways, uh, the upgrade at Blue Lake Park is, became the first construction project in our region. Construction career pathways is basically a way that we can get people into jobs and then get them trained up to move on, pass those jobs, to learn other skills as a part of those jobs. And it's something that we have had, the community colleges, Portland PCC, has signed on as the sixth governmental partner in this program. And we think that this is one of the important things. We had hoped that we would be having this as part of the transportation funding package that unfortunately did not pass, you know, in 2020. But when other construction projects come up, this is something that we will look forward to. And it provides an opportunity, increases equity, increases opportunities for people at the lower ends of the scale, and provides them with training and, and career pathways. Next slide, please. Uh, that's the final slide. But I do want to mention, and I probably don't need to do this to this council, because, uh, the mayor, we also wanted to report that things have been going out quite well at the zoo. You probably know this. Uh, you may have seen the pictures of Nora's new playmate, that, that's every wonderful. The zoo reconstruction bond finished on time and slightly, uh, ahead of, I should say, and slightly ahead of budget. So we have some new facilities. There will be, starting the 19th of this month, there will be a, the zoo lights, which will be both walkable as well as drivable. Uh, so that's the kind of thing that's going to be available to all people in the residence, but you're going to have to get reservations. Um, beyond that, of course, there's transportation issues. As you know, the ODOT is starting the, the I-205 tolling project. There was a presentation this morning to, uh, the Chamber of Commerce in Tuolleton, at which your Chamber of Commerce president was also there. Uh, it's an interesting process, it's a process that was, because I know the tolling is somewhat controversial in Clackamas County. It was a process that was not initiated by ODOT, but was initiated by the, the, um, legislature. Metro's role in this project has been primarily to approve an amendment to the Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Plan, so that this project can go forward, because everybody agrees that the Abernathy Bridge and the two-lane freeway between Stafford Road and, uh, Oregon City is constraining traffic and commerce between Wilsonville and other parts of Clackamas County, as well as other parts of Washington County. So that's, uh, that was a report that's ongoing, and you will see more about that as time goes on. So with that, I don't want to take all your time. I'll open it up to any questions that you may have about any of these, um, or any other subject that you think is, uh, Metro-appropriate.
You're muted, Mayor.
So, sorry about that. Thank you, Counsel Rosenthal. Do any of the councilors have any questions or comments? All right, well, um, seeing none, I want to thank you for, um, coming to visit with us today. And, uh, we look forward to seeing you again. And, um, I think it would be good to have, I look forward to a presentation, you know, in the next couple of months about the, uh, housing presentation, housing, uh, bond, as that develops.
We'll be happy to do that, uh, at your request. And, uh, you know, whenever there's an issue coming up, um, we're happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Okay. And that brings us to a presentation on climate rulemaking with the Department of Land Conservation and Development.
Hi, good evening, I'll just say hello, I'm Ann DeBota, I'm a regional, um, representative for the department. And Kevin Young is going to be here any minute, I think, to give that presentation. I know he was on earlier, so.
Welcome, thank you for coming to present to us.
There's Kevin.
Hi, so sorry about that, I, uh, yeah, I guess I was, uh, in the audience there, so. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald, city councilors, my name is Kevin Young. I'm a senior urban planner with the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Uh, I'm also one of the project managers for our Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking Effort. I'm going to try and share screen here, I have a quick PowerPoint. Um, I know we don't have a lot of time, so I will try to be concise, uh, in my comments here and allow some time for questions, so. Um, hopefully can, can people see the screen? Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities?
Yes.
Perfect, all right. So this rulemaking effort has been going on now for about a year. Our first, uh, meeting of our Rulemaking Advisory Committee was held in November of last year. Um, we just held our ninth meeting on November 5th. Uh, we have a 40-plus member Rulemaking Advisory Committee with representatives from all eight of the metropolitan regions, I'll be talking about those in a minute, uh, in Oregon, that will be largely the ones that are subject to the rules that we're working on. Um, that panel is, uh, quite diverse, uh, with a lot of, uh, representatives from community-based organizations, as well as local governments and other, uh, interest groups in the effort. So the work began, uh, as you likely know, from Governor Brown's Executive Order 20-04, um, which directed, uh, state agencies to take actions to replace or to reduce and regulate greenhouse gas emissions in a variety of ways. Um, I'll be talking about a piece of that, not the overall effort. Uh, there are two key parts of the executive order. One is, of course, to exercise any and all authority and discretion to meet Oregon's climate pollution reduction goals. And the second piece is also very important, to prioritize equity, um, underserved populations, and specifically historically marginalized communities, and impacts that the rulemaking may have on those groups, to ensure that we, uh, have equitable outcomes for everyone, um, as a part of the rulemaking. So first up, um, our status report, where are we on, uh, meeting our pollution reduction targets? We are, we are making some headway, as the slide shows. Uh, on our current trajectory, we would reduce, uh, GHG emissions by about 20% by 2050, but that's not nearly enough, uh, based on the science, uh, and the statewide transportation strategy. Um, our target is really to reduce, uh, those, that pollution by 80%. And I should, I should note that the focus of this rulemaking is on the transportation sector, and specifically on light-duty vehicles, so cars and light trucks, and reducing, um, uh, climate pollution from those sources. so cars and light trucks, and reducing climate pollution from those sources. So we've got a ways to go. Additionally, we also know that past planning practices have had inequitable impacts on certain communities. This graphic here that you see in front of you is a, is a, basically illustrates the practice of redlining that was pretty common in financial circles earlier in this century, and kind of underscores the difference in, in investment, mortgage availability, and the opportunity to build generational wealth between historically underrepresented and white, primarily white areas. So the statistic on this slide shows you that about 72% of white households own homes, while only about 42% of black households own homes. That gap is actually wider than it was when race-based discrimination was legal against home buyers. So we've got a lot of past practices to, to make up for. So that's a part of the work we're doing. This graphic shows you the eight metropolitan areas that are subject to the rule. Portland Metropolitan Region is one of those. I'll be talking a little bit with a little more detail about Portland Metro, because Portland Metro's got a little bit different applicability, but the other regions are shown here, stretching all the way down to our, to our southern border. There are basically two categories of rulemaking that we're engaged with. The first is regional planning to meet pollution reduction targets. This is sometimes referred to as scenario planning. That was kind of the focus of the first part of the rulemaking that we worked upon, worked on, and we were less engaged in the Portland Metropolitan Region because the Portland Metropolitan Region has already done this. So, and I'll talk about this in just a minute, but essentially, scenario planning work for Portland Metro has been done, and the region has developed a plan to, to implement and make progress on GHD reduction and equity as well. So the second part of the, of the rulemaking has to do with updating land use and transportation rules, and that's the piece that we're largely focused on currently. This slide shows you, you know, essentially, the climate smart strategy that you're familiar with, within the Portland Metropolitan Region. So this is a plan, regional policies and strategies for reducing emissions, based on a variety of tools and actions that can be taken. This plan was adopted in 2014 and approved by LCDC in 2015. It is incorporated and monitored through the Regional Transportation Plan, and we will continue to, to monitor, you know, progress on that, on that work. The planning rules is really the second part of, of the work we're doing, and it focuses on revised rules in six areas, and these are the six areas. First of all, climate-friendly areas are walkable mixed-use areas. We will be asking local governments to designate climate-friendly areas as part of the work we're doing. Also, reform of parking management. Thirdly, supporting electrical vehicle charging. Fourth, high-quality, emphasizing high-quality pedestrian, bicycle, and transit infrastructure and planning for that level of, you know, quality infrastructure. The fifth item is to go beyond the focus on motor vehicle congestion standards, which are widely, have been widely used in transportation planning up to this point in time. You may be familiar with measures like level of service or volume-to-capacity ratio. Those generally measure how well motor vehicles are moving through the transportation network. We're asking that that view be expanded and enlarged to provide a broader perspective on success for transportation systems. And the last item is prioritization and selection of projects that meet climate and equity outcomes. And again, I think the Portland Metro Region has already made progress in this regard. Our rules will, will augment those areas. So I'm going to speak in a little more detail about each of these rule areas. And at this point, if people have questions on each of these, that's probably the best way to move forward. I'll look for hands raised or what have you. The first area is climate-friendly areas. So our first draft is pretty different from the draft that we have out now, so I want to speak to the current draft. It's been revised pretty significantly. And essentially, the requirements within the Portland Metro Region will be for Metro, the Regional Governance Agency, to establish the requirements for local government adoption of Region 2040 centers and land use regulations no later than December 31 of 2024. That's for the local governments that have yet to adopt those things for their Region 2040 centers. It's my understanding Wilsonville has done that. Then the rules require those local governments that have yet to do so to comply with that requirement by December 31 of 2025. Lastly, there's a, there will be an ongoing requirement for cities with population over 10,000, Wilsonville included, to report on affordable housing production, mitigation of displacement, and increasing housing choices within those Region 2040 centers every six years. And that would be done in conjunction with the Housing Production Strategy work that is now kind of established by House Bill 2003. So it's not additional work, it's, I guess it's, it's a little more focused on housing production within the Region 2040 centers as we go on. I don't see any hands raised, so I'll go ahead and move on to the next area. Improving parking management. This part of the rulemaking has to do with implementing best practices for parking code details. There's basically three options for local governments. The first would be to repeal parking mandates. The second is to reduce parking mandates for certain types of development and in key areas, and to adopt fair parking policies. The third option is to further reduce parking mandates for types of development and in more areas. There are also additional requirements for more populous communities to do more parking management. Those would not apply to Wilsonville. And in fact, I should say, the next set of rules that I'll be describing, including parking management, it is, we are still working with local governments in the region to clarify how these rules may or may not apply within the Portland Metro Region. So that discussion is ongoing, and this is an area where your engagement, I think, is certainly appropriate, and we would be, we would be interested in your input. The next category of rulemaking has to do with EV charging, electric vehicle charging. The current draft of the rules applies for parking lots with five or more spaces and requires provision of electrical capacity on conduit to serve 20% of spaces with Level 2 charging and 30% more spaces with Level 1 charging for residential and mixed-use development. There's also a conformance requirement for major retrofits for larger cities and a cost exemption if that cost is over 20% of the project's cost. On the transportation planning rule, oh, I see a question from Councilor Leehan.
Yeah, so didn't we just, I don't know, last time, require, in our building code, are they not addressing building code for new construction, that they, they have to provide the wiring? They don't have to provide the unit, but garages have to be wired for electrical chargers?
I have to admit that I'm not an expert on the building code division obligations. We are in the process of working with the Building Codes Division at the state in terms of who's doing what, because there is a little bit of overlap here, and part of it has to do with the structural requirements, and part of it has to do with how we get the electrical service out to a parking lot, which isn't always subject to a building permit, if that makes sense.
No, no, but this is, this, I'm talking new construction.
Okay.
New construction. If we're building a new garage, it must have an electrical conduit for electric car charging.
Okay.
That, that's something that is really cheap to do at the time of new construction. But if you weigh, it's really expensive.
Absolutely.
You have to add it later. It's really expensive. So, so that's an easy fix, an easy change for local government, and we just made it. So I'm surprised to not see it here.
Oh, that's fantastic. Is there, okay, I don't want to get sidetracked.
No, we don't have to get in the weeds, but I'm surprised you didn't hear, because you just went, you just left parking behind on the next slide, so, okay, that's all.
No, I appreciate that, and I'd like to, I'd like to know more, so perhaps, well, I'll, I'll look into it after this meeting. Thank you. I'm, I'm pleased that you've done that work. And I'll confess, I'm not that electric vehicle charging expert from the team, so I'm sort of, we'll, we'll, we'll follow up. The next area, transportation planning rules, focuses on some changes in some key areas. So again, as we talked about, focusing on improvements to pedestrian, bicycle, and public transportation infrastructure. I should note, when we say bicycle, we're really talking about a variety of mobility devices that, you know, scooters and those kind of things kind of fit within that umbrella, but generally, we, we refer to, use the term bicycle to, to refer to the kind of that, that area. One of the key components of this work will be to ensure that local governments are planning for connected, safe, and complete networks for all modes, and prioritizing investments in climate-friendly areas or county and regional centers in the metro, Portland Metro area, on neighborhoods with underserved populations, and making sure that we're providing good access to key destinations within the community. The next piece is selecting projects based on a variety of prioritization factors, and essentially, the bottom line here is that projects across the city, so as a, as a whole, must work to meet the climate goals within the region. And then lastly, the rules will change how we measure success in the transportation system. So allowing local governments to look at a variety of factors, not only just moving single-locked vehicles through intersections. That is kind of the 30,000-foot view on the rules. I can go into more detail if there are questions, but I want to make sure that we have, we have time for that. Our timeline from here forward is we are moving to, towards the public hearing process. So if you see this, there's two ways to provide input to us. The second is input to the Land Conservation and Development Commission. We're actually going to the commission later this week, and the afternoon of November 18th, to give them an update on the rulemaking effort thus far. We will have another meeting with the Land Conservation and Development Commission on February 3rd, with a plan for our first hearing on the, on the rules to be either March 31st or April 1st of 2022, and followed by adoption in May of 2022. So you can always provide input directly to the commission, but also before the commission, please reach out to staff, myself, and others. You can find our contact information on our, on our website. And also providing written testimony to our Rulemaking Advisory Committee. We are meeting again in December, and then have one more meeting in January before we kind of put together our recommendation for the commission. And with that, that is kind of the, that's the overview that I have for you.
Thank you. Do any of the councilors have a comment or question? Well, thank you, the, the lack of, oh, Councilor Leehan.
I didn't get my things going first.
Okay, here you go.
So, so my question is, how does this happen to fall in the lap of DLCD as opposed to DEQ or ODOT, I don't know who else? It, it seems odd that it would be DLCD.
That's a great question, Councilor Leehan. There, actually, if you look at the Governor's Executive Order, there are a number of agencies engaged in this work. LCDC is just one of them. Our focus is on planning, both transportation planning and land use planning, and it's kind of recognizing the significant contribution that transportation planning and land use planning have on climate pollution. And so how we do that differently will have broad impacts. We are close partners with Oregon Department of Transportation, DEQ as well, and also the Department of Energy. So we are part of a, a larger effort known as the Every Mile Counts Strategy, and other work that's being done has to do with cleaner fuels, you know, transportation electrification. So other agencies are engaged in work that's more appropriate under their purview, but this is, this is kind of within our wheelhouse.
All right, thank you, Kevin and Ann. We appreciate your presentation directly to our council today, and we probably would have more questions, except that we have a lot ahead of us tonight. But staff, I think if any of the councilors want further information, let's ask Mark Opnod for more information, and we can get it to, to all of us. Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
That brings us to citizen input and community announcements, and this is an opportunity to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. It is also time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and the city council make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends, or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any citizens wanting to testify, Mr. Gosbrough?
Not under public comment, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to councilor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements, and keeping in mind that we do have quite a bit ahead of us tonight, I look forward to hearing from each of the councilors on the committees, they and activities they've been doing in representation of our citizens. Council President Ockerbaum.
Thank you. Since our last council meeting on November 9th, I attended the second Clackamas County Childcare Task Force meeting, and it sounds like the group will continue to try to set monthly meetings going forward. However, future dates are not yet arranged, so I will keep in tune with that. On November 11th, I was able to attend the Veterans Day Celebration, which our mayor provided a speech at as well, that was held at the Korean War Memorial. And actually, at that event, I learned about something that's happening in our community that we should announce, and that is a blood drive that's actually happening on December 21st, organized by one of the other speakers at the event. And that will be held in the Villawoa Community Center. I mention it now because it was encouraged that people sign up online on the Red Cross website prior to the event. And again, that is held on December 21st. Let's see, today, earlier today, I attended the Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting and listened to the conversation there. There were several agenda items, but one of them of note that we might want to start keeping our eyes out for is, there was a kind of a preview of the plan for Metro's 2023 Regional Transportation Plan, the process and goals for that. And this will be important for us to engage on, and so I look forward to hearing more about it within our city, within our community, opportunities for feedback to that plan. Perhaps this will be something that we can have future communication agenda items on as that continues. It sounds like the timeline for feedback will be a bit aggressive for the, the plan, so we'll want to be on it. Later this week, I look forward to attending on the November 17th, both Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, there will be an event that morning that I'll participate in, as well as a new park opening dedication event on the morning of November 17th as well. And that is at Memorial Park, and it is the new nature play area. And that dedication will be held at 10:00 a.m. at the park in, down in Memorial Park, and it looks like it's a very cool, interesting area. I think there's been some news or information about it in our Boon's Ferry Messenger, as well as social media from the city. And that is it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Leehan.
Yes, I have been to a number of meetings on Yes, I have been to a number of meetings on tourism. We had a good time at the Tourism Committee and Willamette Falls and Landing Heritage Area Coalition, as well as their M&amp;O thing. I did both of those, as well as some veterans' activities at my cemetery. But I have to tell you that the main thing was, I need to thank Councilor Linville for attending the Andrea Bocelli concert with me, and, and it was absolutely fabulous. And so we were fortunate to be able to have that kind of experience. And beyond that, I just want to say Happy Thanksgiving coming up, and be sure to appreciate all the people that are in your life for this Thanksgiving. That's all.
Thank you, Councilor Leehan. That's a new one, an excellent audio. Council, Councilor Witz, please.
I will be brief tonight. I don't have much to report, but congratulations to the Wilsonville girls soccer team. They won state last weekend. So they're the 5A state champions, our girls soccer team. The boys' football team won their game, and so now they are going off to the semifinals in state football, which will be playing at McNary High School next Friday. And we don't have any more home games. We, we have the two playoff home games, and we don't have any more home games, but if we win this game against Thurston, which is a school out of Eugene, we will go on to the state championship, and which will be a big deal. So we look forward to supporting our kiddos in all of that. And yeah, I'll echo, everybody have a great and happy Thanksgiving, and enjoy your families, some turkey, Black Friday, or all the rest, whatever you guys do, so on all your family traditions. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilor Linville.
Well, I haven't had very many meetings since our last meeting, so, but I do have one coming up on Wednesday. It's the C4 Metro Subcommittee Meeting. And there will, on the agenda for that meeting, so I'll have some things to report at our next meeting, but there is a plan to do an update on the interstate bridge replacement, some changes to the regional transportation plan, a little bit on the I-205 toll project, and just a quick note that at the last J-PAC work program, there was a discussion about the Boone Bridge, and I don't know if the mayor has any updates from that or not, but there was a 2023 Regional Transportation Plan Update Work Plan discussion related to the Boone Bridge, and I did not have minutes from that meeting, so I will try and find out that information and will report at our next meeting. And that is it.
Thank you, Councilor Linville. And I will add that related to the Boone Bridge, we're all, I'm seeing, seeing articles, I'm sure we're seeing articles about the infrastructure bill being passed and reading reference to the Boone Bridge. And, you know, one thing for sure, it takes money to do anything with any bridge, and so we're glad to have some infrastructure money coming that way. And I have been asked to participate with some other mayors and other people to urge, urge our federal representatives to support Build Back, the Build Back Better Act, and in, in ways that reflect the, the climate discussion that we just had. And I'm, I'm basically looking at our council goals and the things that we've committed to, and saying that we look for support for, for those efforts related to our council goals. And so with that, that brings us to the consent agenda. And I would like to ask the city attorney to please read the consent agenda.
Resolution number 2931, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the findings and recommendations of the solid waste collection rate report, October 2021, and the Republic Services Rate Schedule effective January 1, 2022. Resolution number 2935, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Taylor Morrison Northwest LLC regarding the Claremont subdivision in Villebois and minutes of the November 1, 2021 city council meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read? Councilor Witz.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Councilor Leehan, the motion is to move and seconded. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to legal business on our agenda, and I would like to ask the city managed, city attorney, excuse me, to read the title of the subject matter of the appeal hearing, please.
This is the, this is the appeal hearing for tonight, an appeal of a portion of the Development Review Board Resolution Number 393-B, Villebois Village Center Mixed Use Development, Pacific Community Design Representative for Costa Pacific Communities applicant and RCS Villebois Development Owner. Review of the record for the Villebois Village Center Mixed Use Project related to approval of the, of a parking area on Lot 12 of Special Area Plan Central Preliminary Development Plan 1C.
Thank you. I called order at 8:12 PM on November 15th, 2021, the Wilsonville City Council hearing on the appeal by Michelle Sandlin concerning a portion of the Development Review Board Resolution Number 393B, Villebois Village Center Mixed Use Development, Pacific Community Design Representative for Costa Pacific Communities applicant and RCS Villebois Owner, case file numbers DB21-0022 and DB21-0023. Do any members of the city council wish to abstain, declare a conflict of interest, or report any ex parte contact or any information gained outside of the hearing?
No.
All right. Have all member, have all of the members of the city council familiarized themselves with the record?
Yes.
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 Yes. I heard from everyone, I believe. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the participation of any member of the city council? And I would, I would just ask Mr. Cosgrove if you're aware of any hands raised or anything that I'm not able to see from here.
I don't see anyone raising their hand, Mayor.
All right. I'm going to just read a description of the hearing process. This hearing is an appeal of a portion of the Development Review Board's decision concerning a portion of the aforementioned application. As such, this hearing is being held on the record only, meaning no new testimony or evidence of any kind is being accepted, neither in person nor in writing. The city council will only consider the evidence already on the record that was before the Development Review Board when it made a decision, and again, no new evidence will be considered. Although city council meetings are open to the public, the public may also attend remotely in accordance with Oregon law. Information regarding how the public can attend this hearing remotely is posted at City Hall and on the city's website, as shown on the screen, and also on the city's website. Is that going to be shown on the screen? Thank you. So here on the screen, you can see that you can attend by going to Zoom and click, and clicking on join a meeting, as noted, it's webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. Or you can use just the phone, and you call 1-669-900-6833, and enter webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. This information is shown on the screen and on the city's web page. The protocol for tonight's hearing will be as follows. The city staff will present a brief factual summary of the Development Review Board, or DRB, process and the, and the DRB decision, as well as what staff recommended to the DRB. Staff will also advise city council as to what portion of the decision the app, the appellant is challenging, what the applicable city code sections are, and a summary of the staff's interpretation of each section as presented to the Development Review Board. If the council has a clar, has clarifying questions for the staff, they may be asked or held until after the presentation. I think that would help it go more smoothly if we can do that, please. The appellant will then be asked to address city council concerning the appellant's challenges to the decision. The appellant may also address any statement made by staff that appellant believes is not correct. The appellant will be given a total of 20 minutes to present her case, based only on evidence in the record before the DRB. No new evidence shall be presented or argued. The appellant will have the option to hold up to five minutes of their argument time for rebuttal, following any argument the appellant, the applicant may present. The appellant does not have to save any time for rebuttal, but if they wish to do so, they must announce before I ask the city recorder to start the clock. Argument must stop exactly when the clock beeps, indicating that the time has ended. If, however, appellant wishes to go beyond the time for initial argument, they may do so, but it will be subtracted from their rebuttal time. After appellant finishes their argument, I will ask the city council if any council members have questions for the appellant, and those questions will be asked and answered. After the questions of the appellant are asked and answered, the applicant will be given 20 minutes for rebuttal. Again, rebuttal shall consist only of arguments of evidence in the record before the Development Review Board. Applicant's argument is strictly limited to 20 minutes. At the end of the 20 minutes, I will ask the city council if any council members have questions for the applicant, and those questions will be asked and answered. And if the appellant has reserved a portion of their time for closing remarks, those remarks will be heard last, and any council member may ask last questions of the appellant. We're now ready for the hearing, and I will ask, I will now call for the staff report. And if council has questions for staff, as I mentioned before, you may ask them now or hold them until after the presentation. We'll now ask the appellant to come forward and present their case. You have 20 minutes and may reserve up to five minutes for rebuttal. Oh, excuse me. I did not mean to go forward with that. I want to stop for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and councilors. My name is Cindy Lookshoi, Associate Planner. I am here tonight to present a factual summary related to appeal of a portion of Development Review Board Resolution Number 393B for the Villebois Village Center Mixed Use Development. Case file numbers subject to appeal include DB2122 and DB2123, related to appeal of a parking area on Lot 12 of Special Area Plan Central of Preliminary Development Plan 1C in the Villebois Village Center. Pacific Community Design Representative for Costa Pacific Communities is the project applicant. Real Capital Solutions Villebois Development is the owner of the subject property. The proposal includes three mixed-use apartment buildings on lots 73 and 76, additional parking on Lot 12, and associated improvements surrounding three sides of the central piazza in Villebois, as shown on the location map on this slide. The park, the parking area proposed on Lot 12, which is circled in red, is the focus of the current appeal. As shown here, the land use review process from application submittal in March 2021 through hearing and approval by the Development Review Board spanned approximately eight months. Key dates in the application review process included the following. The application was deemed complete on June 25th, 2021. The first Development Review Board public hearing was held on September 27th, 2021. Substantial public testimony was received at the first hearing, and a motion to continue was made and approved to afford DRB additional time to review all issues raised, as they related to the Development Code criteria. The DRB also elected to hold the record open for additional testimony and evidence at the continued hearing set for October 25th, 2021. On October 25th, the Development Review Board received additional public testimony, deliberated, and approved the application with conditions by Resolution Number 393B. During the appeal period on November 4th, a portion of Development Review Board Resolution Number 393B was appealed, and this hearing was scheduled before the city council. Villebois has a land use review process that is specifically designed for this master-planned community. All proposed development in Villebois has a preliminary development plan and final development plan. A preliminary development plan is equivalent to a traditional subdivision review, looking at the layout, streets, and other functional components of development. A final development plan is the detailed review of buildings, parks, and open spaces, and other amenities and features. The specific case file numbers of DB Resolution 393B that were appealed to city council include DB2122, which is the preliminary development plan modification for Lot 12, and DB2123, the final development plan for Lot 12. Oral and written testimony submitted on the record in opposition focused on the proposed parking area on Lot 12, shaded in orange on this slide. Access to the proposed parking area would be through the alley connecting to Southwest Toulouse Street and Southwest Ravenna Loop, indicated by the orange arrows. As outlined in the staff report, key concerns fell into four general areas pertaining to the parking area. Alley width and access to the parking area, safety, fencing, and screening, loss of improved landscape area, proposing a parking area where a mixed-use building was previously approved, and desire for additional outreach by the applicant. No issues were identified related to the rest of the proposed project on Lots 73 and 76, applicable standards or findings. No issues were identified regarding procedural requirements. In the following slides, staff will briefly summarize compliance of the project with standards specific to the highlighted areas of concern, as these were listed by the appellant as grounds for their appeal before you this evening. All four are included in the summary in your staff report, as well as in Attachment 2 to the staff report, which provides an index and reference table for findings, code reference, and page numbers of the record to find the relevant information. Staff is happy to answer any questions the council may have in these other areas of concern raised on the record. The appeal lists abuse of the alleyway as a violation to traffic and parking rules. Concerns on the record about the alley include width and access, safety, fencing, buffering and screening, and landscaping of the proposed parking area on Lot 12. and screening, and landscaping of the proposed parking area on Lot 12. Within Villebois, all lots with access to both a public street and an alley are required to take vehicular access from the alley to a garage or parking area. Further, all streets providing access to the proposed development were previously constructed in accordance with the street plan in the Villebois Village Master Plan, and the applicant did not propose any changes to the existing street alignments. Prior approvals entitled access to Lot 12 via the alley through access easements and prohibited access to the public street. Development conditions adopted as part of the current approval address matching of the alley width to existing conditions of the adjacent improved portion of the alley, which is of a width consistent with other alleys throughout Villebois. The alley is private access intended for localized use, and hence is deliberately narrow to encourage people to drive slowly. The alley is not intended for access by fire and emergency vehicles, as public street frontage encircles the block, and this is where emergency vehicles would gain access to buildings, if necessary. Further, all buildings are sprinkled and approved for construction by Tualton Valley Fire and Rescue with limited fire truck access. Fencing is optional in the village center, and where provided should be consistent with the architecture. The vine-supporting fencing proposed around the parking area, except it breaks for pedestrian and vehicular access points, provides a visual buffer between the parking area and the adjacent properties, in that it would not completely block views in and out of the parking lot, and includes breaks for pedestrian connections to Southwest Villebois Drive. It also provides viewpoints in and out of the parking area for safety. A summary related to this topic is presented on pages 11 to 12 of the DRB staff report in Exhibit B. Applicable standards are addressed in findings of the DRB staff report. Findings, page numbers, and references to the applicable code sections are provided on this slide and in Attachment 2 of the council packet. Staff found all standards are met. The appeal also notes concerns that were put on the record regarding the reduction of multiuse due to the parking area being located where a mixed-use building was previously approved. Prior approvals entitled a three-unit residential development on Lot 12, including one mixed-use unit and associated improvements. The developer chose not to construct the approved units in favor of providing additional parking to serve the current proposal for the mixed-use development around the piazza. Parking on Lot 12 is listed as a permitted use in the village zone, subsection 4.125.02 of the development code. Further, the full proposal meets all relevant parking rules. The Lot 12 Preliminary Development Plan modification eliminates the conceptual range of 8 to 12 mixed-use condominium units previously envisioned. The original unit count for Special Area Plan Central was 1,010 units. The current number of units is 933, and with the proposed development would be 985 units with the Lot 12 modification. This less than 10% change to the unit count continues to meet the density requirement for Special Area Plan Central. In addition, the proposed development as a whole would result in a total of 2,568 units throughout Villebois, which is above the density of 2,300 units required to be obtained, meeting the refinement criteria. A summary related to this topic is presented on pages 11 to 12 of the DRB staff report in Exhibit B. Again, applicable standards are addressed in findings of the DRB staff report. The findings, page numbers, and references to the applicable code sections are provided on this slide and in Attachment 2 of your council packet. With regard to Attachment 2, staff would like to make a correction to the code reference for findings B149 and B150 as cited in the key in this attachment to your council packet. The correct code reference is 4.125.18J1A4 and 5, as shown on this slide. Staff found all standards are met. On October 25, 2021, the applicant submitted a memo to the DRB for consideration at the continued hearing. To address public concerns, the applicant agreed to modifications to the design of the parking area on Lot 12 as follows. Widen the alley where parking is proposed to be consistent with the width of the developed portion of the alley. Reduce the number and change the orientation of parking spaces in the alley from four diagonal spaces to two parallel spaces. Reduce the height of the proposed fence surrounding the parking area from six feet to five feet. And provide a resting area with paving and benches at the northeast corner of the parking At the continued hearing on October 25, after taking additional testimony from the public and the applicant, the DRB moved to approve the application with two additional conditions of approval directly responding to concerns raised by the public and as recommended by staff. The first condition of approval, DRB 1, required that the drive aisle on the southwest side of the alley, between the existing trash enclosure and the curve of the alley where parking is proposed, be widened to match the width on the other side of the trash enclosure where parking is already provided for residents of the block. The condition further stated that no parking spaces are to be allowed to extend into the widened alley further than the existing parking spaces. The second condition of approval, DRB 2, required that all parking spaces on Lot 12 be reserved parking for residents and/or employees. These two conditions were in addition to the four modifications the applicant presented. As recommended by staff, the DRB approved the application with conditions. As adopted by the DRB, with all information as submitted on the record, the proposed development meets all applicable standards. The full record associated with DRB Resolution Number 393B is attached as Exhibits A through M to your council packet. Staff is available to answer any clarifying questions the city council may have regarding the information in the record as it relates to case file numbers DB 2122 and DB 2123. The planning director and planning manager are also here this evening. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
I will now ask if the council members have questions at this time, Councilor West?
Thank you very much. Question, the restriction or the condition put on by DRB. So if I'm understanding correctly, it would only allow parking by the customers of the residential areas, and it would, or residents of the actual residential housing above, in the units, above the commercial area, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Excuse me?
So it would not allow for guest parking or parking by members who live in single-family homes around that area or any other structure? How would that be enforced? And it's my understanding that was not the original suggestion from the city staff?
Just to clarify, I think the parking is reserved for residents and the owners of the business not, or the employees of the business not customers, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. They would all be reserved spaces for residents or employees.
Okay, but that was not an original, that is not necessarily originally a part of the code to adhere to code standards? That's an additional requirement added on top of the code?
That's correct, and actually, it was suggested, well, it was suggested by DRB as well as the applicant, as a way to guarantee that there would be, well, it was suggested as a way to reduce the amount of traffic that would be in the alley, and it was, it's not based on a code standard. There is not a standard that requires that.
And maybe this is for the city attorney. Do we have it within our scope to add additional requirements beyond the code? Is that within our domain?
Well, if you make a decision tonight where you disagree with the DRB's decision, you could.
I think he's specifically talking about this reference to the parking standards, which if the applicant doesn't object at the time, would be allowed, right?
At the time, they made the, maybe I misunderstood the question. The applicant did not object at the time, and in fact, the applicant was supportive of the suggestion, so that's why it was added. I mean, DRB may have added it anyway, but the applicant did not, the applicant supported it.
Okay.
My question has to do with the alley, and with the original plan for that parcel for the parking lot in the master plan. Would access to that, would access to that residential facility as well, if it wasn't going to be parking lot, would all the access be through that alley regardless?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that not a standard, I believe it was in the record, that it is a standard in Villebois that residential parking for homes or for multiple family units, all of that parking access is through alleyways, is that not correct?
Yes, so if there is an alley available to access, you know, to provide, or to access garages or parking, then the access has to come off of that alley. It cannot come off of a public street.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands raised at this point. Oh, Councilor West, are you raising your hand?
Yes, I am. One more quick question. I did drive by the area to take a look, I drove in the alleyway, and I noticed that there are parking spots across from the townhomes. There are garages, and then across from that is a series of parking spots already in that alleyway. You drive up to where the bend is, if you're driving through, and on that, across from the townhomes on that left-hand side, it appears to be that parking spots would be added there, but would already match what was distal to where the new spots would go. Am I understanding that correctly, that there are already spots like that behind these townhomes?
Yes, and those provide parking for the apartments or the multifamily that's on that corner of the block. So the spaces, the existing spaces that are south of the trash enclosure, those provide parking for the apartments.
Okay, and so it would basically be congruent with the type of parking that's already behind these townhomes?
Yes, that's correct, and originally, there were four diagonal spaces proposed, and those have been reduced to two parallel spaces.
And that takes up less space even?
Yes, and it does, so that the cars would not overhang into the alley, they would be parallel to it.
Do the cars distal to the new parking overhang into the alley?
Good question. I don't, yeah, I think those are sufficient for people to pull all the way in, and so they don't, you know, they're standard spaces there, so they don't hang into the alley, is my understanding.
Was this a compromise just kind of made in DRB based on people's concerns?
Yes, so there was concern that those diagonal spaces would, you know, overhang, it was a couple of things. One, that the alley was narrower there, but also that the cars would hang into the alley. And I see that the applicant is on here as well, so when they get to that, we get to that portion where they are giving their presentation, we may want to defer that question for them to answer at that point.
Okay, I think, thanks for the clarification. I will go to the applicant.
Thank you. Did I see your hand up, Council President Awkado?
It did, but I think it was covered. I, you know, just after Councilor West's question about if those parking places were the same as what was, you know, earlier in the alley, I wanted to confirm that, I thought they were the parallel spots, so not exactly the same. So I just wanted to get some clarification on that, but it was already just flushed out.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not seeing any more hands. Let me know if I'm missing, paying one raise, but it doesn't look like there is one. And so that brings me to the point, I will now ask the appellant to come forward and present their case. You have 20 minutes, and you may reserve up to five minutes for rebuttal. What would you prefer?
We will do 15 minutes for the appeal and five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, thank you for letting us know that. So based on the appellant's response, will the city recorder please set the clock for 15 minutes and advise the appellant to proceed? And do I understand, Michelle, Ms. Samlin, that you are going to ask your son to speak?
Yes, he's sitting down right now. Duncan Salmon's going to present on behalf of us on the appeal and the rebuttal.
Okay, I'm not seeing him on the screen right now, but I'm assuming that will...
He's under, right now it says Cindy.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure how he feels about that, but...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Samlin, I'm simply looking at the names. Okay, I see you there, and go ahead, and if the city recorder will tell us if we're started with the clock, I will let you please announce that.
Hold on a second while I...
Got it set for Kim's...
Are we going to see the clock so it's available for the speaker?
So it's going to buzz so he knows?
It's up there. The iPad isn't working. Technical difficulties. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you, we're just waiting for that, I think we're waiting for that clock to be visible so you can reference it.
I can see it, just tell me when to go.
I'm starting the clock, mayor.
So, once again, we believe that Lot 12 was kind of rushed into development. We also believe that the city did not actually do the due diligence on this, and we believe we can show that going forward, so I'm just going to kind of jump right into it. The first thing we wanted to talk about is things that weren't actually brought up at the DRB hearings, but we had addressed in our letter. We're going to discuss those as well. The first question we always had was why is the parking lot being built? We never really got a clear answer to that question. Now, we asked the question about, well, why would it be needed, and is it needed? And according to Ms. Luxhoy and Mr. Manser of DKS Associates, they stated in the minutes that no additional parking was needed in the first DRB hearing. Now Katie Dunwell, one of the DRB members, asked if the additional buildings A, B, and C met requirement parkings. They said they did, and they would not require any additional parking. DKS Associates also said they conducted an initial parking study in 2019. DKS Associates also said they conducted an initial parking study in 2019 and concluded there was plenty of adequate parking in the Villaboa Village, so it wasn't necessary to build the parking lot in any way. Then we asked, well, why, what would it benefit to build the parking lot, all right? Did the city need the parking lot? None was stated by the city, and there would be no generate, revenue generated by the city, so the city didn't require it. Now would Costa Pacific, the applicant, would they profit from it? Well, according to them, at the second DRB hearing, the applicant stated that they planned to lose a half a million dollars to develop this parking lot and gain nothing from it, so it's not in their best interest either, which is bizarre to us. Did the community request it? Well, no. In fact, none of the members of the 41 that petitioned, or people that lived within the 500 feet that we'd spoken to, had previously been consulted on any of this with the parking. In fact, we found out by a rumor, and then once we confirmed the rumor, within a few days, we were able to get 41 petitioners to back us up with this, most sat through both DRB hearings. And the homeowners were concerned, mainly like Cindy stated earlier, that there were main concerns about safety and whatnot, but there's also a severe legal concern about loss in property equity value to their homes. So it wasn't needed by the city, it wasn't needed necessarily by the applicant, and it doesn't benefit any of the homeowners. So we, we were confused as to why it was even being presented. Now, where we feel the city kind of dropped the ball is they stated at the time that this was part of multi-use, that the parking lot would fall under that definition. Now, it clearly doesn't, because if you look at the definition of multi, it means more than one, and a parking lot only has one use, and we have to agree that one does not equal more than one. If you also look at the Wilsonville Development Code section, mixed use is defined typically as two to four-story buildings that combine residential, commercial, and offices, so it doesn't meet the definition of multi-use, that was barely addressed. The first subsection we had in our letter to complaint that was not addressed was about the right to use of the off-site parking, since it would be restricted parking. Now, that must be evidenced in the form of recorded deeds, easements, leases, contracts, securing full and permanent access. Now, no permanent parking plan was ever obtained or given to the records, and there's no way to know how to enforce it, and do the police enforce it, and how do they know which cars to tow, which cars to ticket, is it privately enforced? None of that was decided either. The idea that there's no plan put in place, and that this isn't gonna just be end up used as a public parking is, is kind of ludicrous. The next subsection we brought up involves this, no area shall be considered a parking space unless it can be shown, and I want to highlight that word, shown, that the area is accessible and usable for that purpose, and has maneuvering area for the vehicles as determined by the planning director. Well, no study or finding that we've seen, at least, has been submitted addressing this, and no study has been done on that alleyway that we can find. In fact, in the first hearing, Chairman Nada asked if a study had been performed, and was informed that none had been. So there's no study that can show that it's actually safe to use that alleyway to access, access that parking lot. The bigger issue is, is this, off-street parking shall be designed for safe and convenient access that meets ADA and ODOT standards. Now, it was proposed to us that part of that alley was private, and that they were gonna make it a two-lane on one part of the alley, and that's what's our understanding, and that was, that's the, the printout I have from that second hearing. To make it two-way, you have to provide two lanes, okay? The only private alley for that, the largest private alley, right, is the one that's 14 feet, seven inches, which would leave you seven feet, three and a half inches per lane. Now, average car width in the United States with rearview mirrors is between six and a half feet to seven feet, eight inches, so there would be cars that would be too large to fit in the lane in that alley. Now, under the Wilsonville Countercode, Chapter 3, and ODOT, they set minimum lane width at 10 feet. Now, you can reduce that, it can be smaller if a city engineer does a finding to approve the widths that don't meet ODOT standards, and we have seen no finding or study by any city engineer that has been filed to this date that meets that. I just put this in here to add, ODOT lane widths may vary from three to 3.6 meters, that's 10 to 12 feet, okay? So in conclusion of all this, it's not necessarily needed by anyone, the city even found, DKS found, this is not necessary parking, there's ample parking already in the area. It doesn't benefit the city, and by the admission of the applicant, does not benefit them, which is kind of odd to me, because I think they'd be on our side, we're about to save them half a million dollars. And of course, it doesn't benefit the homeowners who stand to lose substantial amount of money and have the alleyways where they park their car be a lot less safe. So we feel that this whole process has been kind of just pushed through and wasn't really fully addressed. And the reason we believe that is because, as was stated at the first DRB hearing, this project was supposed to be done in 2013, here we are in 2021, almost nine years later, and it hasn't been done. We feel what happened was, the city put pressure on Costa Pacific to finish this, they pushed this together, kind of slapped it together, got through the city, and these things were ignored. Part of the reason we feel this way is because my mother, at the second DRB hearing, pointed out that the mayor, in a different hearing, had said, yes, we're going to listen to the residents regarding their concerns. However, at both DRB hearings, before the DRB voted, the city planner, Mr. Daniel Pauly, informed the DRB that they did not have to listen to what we said at both hearings, contradicting the mayor directly, which was very upsetting to us. At the second hearing, when they, before, before they voted, two of the DRB board members actually apologized to us and told us that they had to vote this way, not that they disagreed with us, not that they were compelled to vote this way, but they had to, which tells us that it wasn't really a vote for them. Now, the other thing that I mentioned in the second DRB hearing was, we hired an attorney who helped us with some of this, and he had other findings that we didn't have time to bring up at that hearing, but they have, he does have those available. And I do know that there are multiple members that wanted to skip this appeal and just go straight to lawsuits, so I just wanted to make sure you were all informed of that going forward. And that's my presentation, if you have any questions, let me know.
So I would like to now ask the city council members if they have any questions for the appellant. Councilor Lindvill? Mr. Sandlin, you mentioned concerns that the homeowners had about losing their parking in the alley, could you explain that, please?
No, not losing their parking in the alley, currently, our garages all face that alley, and that's where they, they go in to park their cars into the garage, okay? I don't know how the widening would work, there are portions of that alley which simply cannot be widened, and my issue with that was mainly that you already have 20 cars that park there regularly, and now you're talking about more than doubling that, and no study's been, been found or done that we could find that shows that it's safe to increase that amount of traffic in an alley that narrow and small. That was our primary concern.
I'd like to ask the follow-up question, I, I didn't get, I didn't follow your, what you were saying, on how the residents would lose parking.
They're not.
Can you just take a?
They're not going to lose parking. The concern was, you have already 20 residents that use that alley to park, because their garages face the alley, or their parking lots are in the alley. Okay, now you're adding another 20-plus spaces with this parking lot. No study has been performed on that alleyway, that we could find at least, that shows that it's safe to, to do that on an alley that, that's, that's that narrow. Now, that main alley I mentioned is 14 feet, seven inches, the other side of the alley is only 13 feet, one inches, and the average car length is around 13 feet, so most cars have a hard time just getting in and out of their garages. That was the main concern, so you're gonna increase traffic where it's already very difficult to maneuver and negotiate.
And I'd like to add, we also, yeah, and I'd like to add, we know that the standard trip is two and a half per, per driver, so we already have 50 currently right now on a standard in and out per day, now you're going to add another 50-plus to that, another 55, that's a lot of vehicles going in and out of that very narrow alley, and we are very concerned about safety.
And especially since it'll mostly be at similar times of day, morning and evening, when people come in, or come leave to go to work, and when people come home.
Thank you, so I'm looking for any other city councilors who are raising their hands, Council President Kristen Ockebell.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. At, at the end of your presentation, you referred to comments that were made by city staff about not needing to listen to the public, and I, I know that we've all received a copy of the transcript of the meeting, so I'm wondering if you could help identify where, where that was in the transcript, so we can better understand that piece.
Yes, it was, it was the city planner, Daniel Pauly, he stated that shortly before the DRB board voted in both hearings.
And I'll also add, we asked at the very first meeting, if this, we were told this was a done deal, it didn't matter what the citizens said or thought, we asked that question, and it was asked at the end. Mr. Pauly went into, well, no, that's not true, and went into a whole discussion, and then at the end of his said, his, his comments, he said, well, actually, that is true, it's, this is what it is, and it's moving forward.
Could I, could we follow up on that? I, I think we're talking about two different things, and I want to really follow this question. So the first question Councilor Ockebell asked was, and I, I have the transcript here too, and I just want to be sure what I'm, what I'm reading and what's being referenced. So where they said, we don't have to listen, can anyone show me that? I, I just want to be able to know what we're referencing.
I will say that I looked at the minutes as well, I looked at all of them, and I did think that they were incomplete, there was comments that were made that were not in there, as well as some grammatical stuff going on, of course, I understand that, the expedient of trying to put it together, but there, we felt like the minutes weren't complete.
Well, this is, I, I'm sorry, that seems that way, I am reading the, the transcript from a transcription service, so it's.
Your Honor.
Councilor West, have you found the section?
No, I, I don't, I don't, I have not found the section this quickly, however, I listened to the entire six-hour or over-six-hour meeting, the original one, and in that meeting, I did not, I cannot think of any ref, it would stand out to me, because I know as a council, we very much care about the input from the public, I cannot think of any instance where Dan Pauly represented the city that way, I don't know if there was a misunderstanding or something's not in context, but I, from witnessing and watching the entire meeting, I don't have any recollection of that happening, but maybe we should take a little closer look, if we miss something.
Mayor, what, what you have in your council packet is a verbatim transcript, which is not to be confused with.
Right, it's not a transcription service of the recording.
Right, and those, those do not equate to minutes, minutes are just merely a reflection of generally what took place at the meeting and any motions that were made.
So if we could have just a minute, please, so that I can look for this.
And we did not have access to the transcript, only the minutes.
Well, the, the transcript is, is something I'm sure that we can share with you, it's a, it's a, it's actually, in, actually, you do, it's in the council packet, it's, it's on the website, so.
Okay, we'll go back and look.
And so.
Have you got the transcript?
Just give me a short minute here, please. I was just searching, I haven't found it yet. Number 27. I don't know if I can do a control F.
Can I just do that?
Kim, do you, do you have a hard copy? Do you have a hard copy?
I think I've gone through this one, all the way through, may have to take more time. Was I correct in hearing, this is Joanne Lindvill, was I correct in your statement that, that these comments were right before the DRB voted?
Yeah, they were shortly.
So that would have been, that would have been at the October 25th meeting?
That, and I remember vividly from the first meeting on whatever it was, September 27th.
Or it's the end of the night.
On the September 27th meeting, and this is on the transcript on page 53 of 56, which is in the council packet, it says, there is a, Chair Nada is saying, I'm trying to go back to see what the question is, he, he's responding to a question from Mr. Manser that says, so if your question is, is there adequate parking within the village with this application, the answer is yes. The chair says, is there any problem sharing this information with us? And Barbara was clear that we can't, this kind of goes on, we can't use this as a basis for denial. Mr. Pauly says, we have to talk to the community development director and see if we can get it to a point where there is a lot of graphs in that memo right now, but we'll see if there's a component. Chair Nada said, that's great. The other note is, I'd like to have it for the applicant, we hope you'll get a chance to speak to some of the neighbors, is that what you're referring to?
No.
I think the word might have been used, as Mr. Pauly used, was a formality, speaking with the citizens was a formality.
I think that was, that is a different section in here that I remember that, and that is in the transcript, and I will have to look for that section, but I, I didn't hear, I guess let's come back to the question. Your, your honor, might, might I ask a question, I mean, just ask if this is the It's on, on the, in the, on the transcript, page 20 of 25, it starts at the bottom. Which meeting is this? This is on the 25th. And Mr. Pauly says, but I mean, they are already, I think he's referencing a comment that was made by Mr. Horn, that has to do, it's, so Mr. Horn says, so you know, if I can make a condition to separate the two applications into separate entities, I would do so, I don't know that I have the right to do that, Mr. Pauly says, but I mean, they are already separate, and all of these have been brought, brought together, so the decision is being made on all of these under state law tonight. So from the perspective, I mean, granted, you could approve part of it and disapprove part of it in your motion, but it wouldn't really dash, separating them would, separating them out wouldn't be the way to go about it. So again, it's not the neighbor's preference, we understand neighbors have preferences, every land you're hearing for infill residential I've heard in a decade have neighbors, have strong preferences against development, and we understand that, but it's the applicant's property that they have a legal right, a list of legal things that they could do on that property, and they're requesting to do one of those legal things. Is that the statement that you were referencing?
No, it was not. Your Honor, I think I'm, I think I'm.
Your honor, I think I'm, I, I think I may have found it. Um-
Thank you, Mr. Knosgrove.
And, and if you don't mind, I'll just read it-
I think that may have been-
I, I think this is, um-
What hearing are you in?
I think this is where Chirannata is trying to address, uh, concern from one of the residents and says, okay, thanks. So I just have one question for staff, Barbara or Dan. So a question that was repeated like, is this meeting just a formality? Is that the one you were talking about?
Mm-hmm.
That was the one my mother was talking about.
Okay, is this meeting just a formality? And yeah, so if you guys can answer this question, do you have anything? Mr. Pauly responded and said, so it's not a formality. I'd say some of the component applications, there's not a lot of options on. I think some of the correspondence, some of the posts you may have seen is around the zone change itself for Lot 76. Really, I mean, it's a menu of one option. And then there's an inaudible section and it goes on to say, is a precedent that has been done, you know? I don't know, dozens of times during the implementation of the Villa Bois Village Master Plan. So some people may, just a lack of option, lack of options there is in some ways that functionality, though it was not intended functionally. It almost does seem like a formality because it is kind of going through the steps, that formal step that's kind of already had a lot of history and support behind it. In terms of the actual design, particularly around like the SAP amendment, this board well knows, we're not creating new policy or anything. But still, the application and making decisions around that is still up in the air and this board, they know, still has power to vote that up or down based on review of that criteria. That said, there's been a lot of history, you know, as has been stated in testimony. I mean, there's been talk about this for a long, for as long as there's been talk about Villa Bois. So from that point, there's a more robust history and record for this project than typical. It goes back to all the legislative history from the years of Villa Bois planning to kind of assumptions of the number of units, as this was a thought out master, master plan. I mean, there's always been this assumption of kind of these multi-use buildings with this range of units at this location and all of this infrastructure, traffic, et cetera. Planning that's occurred over the last couple of decades. So in terms of the allowed use, it's clear, it's an allowed use. But the, uh, the another thing I would state in all these, there are certain things that are clear and objective, that it's pretty clear when you look in the staff report that yes, it's black and white, that yes, it meets or no, it doesn't. There are other things that are more discretionary around design that you know is still stuff that the board is looking at. So in that sense, there is still a lot of decisions. There are still things up in the air. But on other things, it's really double checking staff and then analysis has been done to make sure something hasn't been missed. End of statement.
Okay, thank you. So that, that began, that, thank you. We, we started down that pathway to answer Council President Ockerbo's questions. I'm just coming back to you to say, did you get your question answered?
Well, I'm not sure if I have yet. Um, I, I, because I, I believe in the presentation we heard that there was a comment about, um, discouraging or not allowing public to speak. Um, and then the passage that we just heard read about if this is a formality or not, I think it's, um, you know, it, it starts about talking about the zone change for Lot 76, which I believe that zone change, Lot 76 was a separate lot.
That's correct.
And the zone change was from the public facility zone to the village zone, which everything in Villa Bois is village zone. So I'm wondering if that formality conversation was kind of rooted in, is it a formality to change from public zone to village zone? Because it, as, as city staff said, there's an option of one. There's, there is only one zone within Villa Bois. So I think that kind of, you know, puts some context around the comments about, is this a formality? But I, I'm still curious where in the transcript it has that, um, you know, public comment is discouraged. So, um, you know, I've read through the transcript and I, as I know, other council members have as well, and we are all, um, still looking through those ends of the transcripts to see if we find that space. Thank you.
I will mention to, to, to your, um, about the public comment. It dramatically felt that way on the second, on the October 25th. We were given 90 seconds. Only five of us were allowed to talk. We barely mentioned that they, the development co-petition or objection letter that we put in. And then we were cut off and said, we got to vote. Um, and then to give an apology before they voted, um, and them saying, and the DRB board telling us, well, we have to vote this way. Why? I mean, we, it, it was so rushed on the second one, it felt like we got an impetus citizen, uh, feedback in the bud. That's how it felt to all of us.
Thank you for, um, adding that context. Councilor West, I believe you have your hand up.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I will say this, as I watched the meeting, um, there was a premise or, uh, an underlying belief that from the, from the community that, uh, that they were never going to be heard. Um, and so some of the testimony from the community, if you read that in the transcript, will kind of show that they, there is this almost preconceived idea that, um, they're just a formality and the decision's already been made. And I don't know if that was communicated some way prior to the meeting. I don't necessarily know, um, I think it's unfortunate that that, that, um, that had happened, but I, but I do think that in the transcripts you'll see that even early on in the, in, in public testimony, there was some of that premise already coming into the meeting.
Councilor West, I think this is a place to ask questions.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I guess that, that's just something I noticed when I watched the meeting as we're reviewing transcripts and addressing that original question, um, about, uh, um, it being a formality. Um, I, I, I think that that's also in context of that question.
Okay. So I'm just going to review the, the, the procedures here. Um, and so for everyone, so we have heard the staff report. The appellant presented a 15-minute presentation and has reserved five minutes for rebuttal. Before we go to that point, um, I asked each members of the city council if they have questions for the, um, for the appellant. And I'm just about to close that section and go on to the next section where I, where I ask the applicant to come forward. I will ask, I do have a question for the appellant. And that is, when, you know, um, when, when this was, um, when you were preparing for the October 25th, um, meeting of the Development Review Board, did you get instructions for how to present like we did tonight?
Not that I recall.
You mean, you mean from the city?
Right. I mean, like how many minutes and so forth?
Yeah, they told us-
We were told, yeah.
Yeah, we had 90.
Yeah, they told us at the, they told us at the September 27th meeting, um, that they were, that we'd get 90 seconds. They didn't tell us they were going to limit how many of us could speak.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, I'm seeing no further hands raised. And so now I will go to the next step and I will ask the applicant to come forward and present their case. The applicant has 20 minutes and the clock will be set.
May I just make one point, Your Honor?
Excuse me?
So the reason we have the transcript printed is if you would like to make a point in your argument, you should cite to the transcript because otherwise it becomes very confusing and it's difficult. That's why we have it, that's why we have it printed. So what I would suggest you do is if you would like to rely on the transcript, do you have a copy?
I do not have a copy. I would not provide a copy.
I'll let you use mine, but if there's something you want to add in your closing, that would be helpful.
And I, I want to confirm that there's a lot of material in this case and the transcript was provided through the internet in the, the published council packet. And, and now I'm glad to know that it sounds like a printed copy of that which has been provided. So, um, at this point, I will ask the applicant to come forward and present their case. And you have 20 minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor, and good evening. Uh, my name is Michael Robinson. My last name is spelled R-O-B-I-N-S-O-N, I'm a Land use attorney with a law firm with Schwab, Williamson Wyatt. My mailing address is 1211 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite 1900, Portland, Oregon, 97204. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Uh, also, we have Rudy Cadleb. Rudy, as you know, has been involved with Villa Bois since inception. And also here tonight on behalf of the applicant are Stacy Connery with Civic Community Development. Stacy's the applicant's planner. And Christina Coltivari, she is the, uh, applicant's landscape architect. Um, if you have legal questions following my presentation, please ask me. If you have factual questions, I think Rudy is the better person to ask than me. But, and before I go, and by the way, we're not going to take anywhere near 20 minutes, but before I go on, let me just mention a couple of things relating to the discussion that I just heard. Uh, first of all, the transcript is Exhibit C. That's in the city council packet at page 250. And this is what the mayor has been saying tonight. Uh, the transcript has been part of the public record, uh, since the, uh, printing of the city council agenda on the web. So it's, it's available to everyone who looked at it. I took a look at it as well. Secondly, and, and I say this not because we begrudge the public a right to, to comment or testify. And honestly, I cannot imagine, having been involved in Wilsonville hearings, uh, that people were instructed not to testify. That's not the announcements that are given at the commencement of public hearings. It's not what's in the notices of public hearings that surrounding property owners receive 20 days before the initial evidence hearing. Um, but, but let me make this point. These procedural objections were not preserved below and they, and even if they were, they weren't raised in the appeal. So while we respect the ability of council to discuss this matter, I don't think they're properly preserved appeal issues. You have to state them, you have to preserve them below, you have to make an objection. And then if you're concerned about what the DRB did with respect to its procedure, you have to include that in your appeal. These issues were not included in the appeal. Doesn't, you know, we don't begrudge the city council discussing them with the public. We think it's important to have transparency, transparency and clarity. But as a matter of this appeal tonight, Mayor, uh, these were not preserved for, uh, per consideration by city council. I know that's like, yeah, and I, I'm going to say, I know that sounds like a lawyer's answer and it is, um, but I wanted to make that point for you.
But we do have to be consistent. Thank you.
You do have to be consistent, um, but I simply wanted to point that out. So what, what I'm going to do in the next few minutes is explain why the DRB's decision should be affirmed by the city council. And that goes to one other issue. DRB has an obligation to make a decision based on the approval criteria if the applicant meets its burden of proof. Mayor, as you noted a moment ago, this, this case has a lot of pages to it. And that demonstrates that the applicant met its burden of proof. And that's what the DRB found. Um, as I'll explain in a minute, there's not a reason to reverse the DRB decision. The only other thing I want to mention, uh, well, let me just go on and just say a couple other things. Um, and I'm going to cut down what I had planned to say, Mayor, because I think the staff report was very thorough and, and it is fairly late. So one of the questions the appellant's asked early in their presentation was why the, why the parking lots proposed. And I think that's, that's a reasonable question to ask. Now, there is no need standard in the DRB approval criteria. But here's why. The purpose of the applications are in to improve the availability of parking in the area by dedicating the 24 parking space lot to area residents and retail employees. That makes more on-street parking available to support the retail uses in the mixed-use area. The result is a stronger retail presence, which does exactly what the city council would like. It results in a good mixed-use area with housing and retail. Parking is important to that. And as you know, and as staff told you, uh, parking lot 12's part, or Lot 12's parking spaces are conditioned to be available to residents and, uh, employees, not to others. And that supports the retail parking in the area. And that's why this parking lot is being proposed. Um, let me talk now about the first appeal issue, which is, is the alley. The alley and the, the parking lot meet all of the relevant city standards and the alley is safe. If you take a look at, for example, pages, uh, 74 and 75 of the DRB decision, uh, th, those two pages alone explain why the alley is safe. You also have testimony by DKS in the record that DR, that DRB relied upon in finding that the alley was safe. The alley also meets city standards for width, for sight distance, a, and for other requirements associated with alleys. Um, the applicant suggested some conditions of approval, which they were happy to offer. One of the questions earlier by, uh, Councilor West was whether those conditions were appropriate. The answer is yes. The applicant proposed them and the applicant accepts them and they're feasible to be achieved. So with respect to the alley itself and the parking lot, uh, the answer is that the evidence shows that DRB correctly made a decision that the alley was safe, it met city standards, and the parking lot met city standards. And that's what the DRB's job was. The other issue is whether a building had to be here and the answer is no. The alley is a permitted, I'm sorry, the parking lot is a permitted use in the zone. It's appropriately located. Uh, it's like any other use that can be built here without a need standard. Um, but it, but as the staff reported, page two tells you, it's a permitted use in the zone. The staff report also said that the, uh, that you don't have to have a residential building here. The development is fully within the density range required for Villa Bois. That is really an abbreviated presentation on behalf of the applicant, Mayor. Uh, the short answer is DRB did the job the city council requires it to do. By looking at the evidence, the applicant has the burden of proof and the DRB found that the applicant met the burden of proof. So we would ask the city council to affirm the DRB's decision. It's supported by substantial evidence from the whole record. All of the conditions in the DRB decision are feasible to be satisfied. If you have questions, please ask, uh, please ask me or Mr. Cadleb before you close the record and we're happy to answer them. And thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Uh, now, do any of the members of the city council have questions for the applicant? Councilor West?
Actually, no, I have no question, sorry.
Oh, okay. Um... Not seeing any other hands raised. So I will, is that right? Okay. I will now ask the appellant to present their final rebuttal using the reserved five minutes.
Okay.
Your Honor, I'm starting the clock.
Yeah, I haven't been able to find, I haven't been able to go through the entire transcripts, but I haven't been able to find the, the quote I'm looking for yet. But, uh, I will go through it later and, and send that to you if you guys wish. Um, I would like to say that, um, talking about the attorney talking about being included in the appeal, the appeal form only allows us two sentences. Um, as far as the subsections we brought up, those were sent in a letter and I did mention them, that, that we had brought up subsections, um, in the second hearing when I spoke. Um, so none of that was, was new. Um, as far as, I understand that, that, that he's saying the DRB found that this is okay. Our contention is that the DRB did not have the prerequisite study to, to actually do that. They didn't have a finding from the city engineer. You have to understand, this process was changed three times. Initially, it was supposed to be a public parking lot. Then it was supposed to be a one-way, then it all of a sudden it's, well, no part of it's private, now it's two-way. And I want to point out too, that in the, uh, first hearing, um, the applicant informed the DRB when they asked about the width of the alley that it was 18 feet, which actually is not correct. And then in the second hearing said, well, we can widen it to 16 feet. Now, like I said, we've been hearing lots of different things and it's changed several times going through it. So from our perspective, we don't feel that what we brought in is, is unfair because we did present it to the DRB before the second hearing. We did mention it in our comments to the DRB before the second hearing. Um, the fact that they didn't discuss it and neglected it, which was part of my presentation, we feel falls on them. Um, that's pretty much all I have to say about that for now.
Thank you. So that concludes your rebuttal period. I just want to make sure I'm-
Yes, that's fine.
Understanding. Thank you. So, um, at this point- So at this point, we can ask if the council members have any further questions of the appellant. And I have a question.
Yes.
Perhaps it has something to do with just the volume here. But can you clarify again what you mentioned that you brought up? That you brought up that you're...
Yes, I mentioned that we had submitted a letter.
Did you think wasn't, somebody thought wasn't? Can you clarify that?
Yes, I mentioned in the second DRB hearing that we had cited parts of the code in our letter.
We had cited potential abuses in the development code. My son brought it up, and I brought it up in my 90 seconds. And no one addressed it, discussed it.
Okay, I, thank you. Now I understand what he said. Thank you. And I did read that. I read that very carefully. Members of the city council, do you have any other questions of the appellant? Okay, at this point, I want to ask if any of the council members have further questions for staff. I do have a question for staff. And I see Counselor Lehan has your hand raised. Please go ahead.
Yes, well, I'm, I guess I'm confused. I've read most of this. I don't know that I've read absolutely every piece, but I've read almost all of it. And I'm, is the appellant doesn't want a parking lot there, is my understanding. But their preference would be to have condo development there? Or, you know, I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out what the end game is here. Because it seems to me the developer is trying to, is trying to address neighborhood concerns with regards to parking so that the development can be finished. But it was, but the original plan was that that was supposed to be another, another whatever, 10, 12 condos. More dwelling units in that space. And that's why he's saying it will cost $500,000 because he's foregoing building that building. And instead doing a parking lot because over the last two or three years, there've been a lot of issues raised in the neighborhood about lack of parking. And so the developer is trying to address that with this piece rather than build those units. So I'm, now, we can't say that the developer can't do either of those things. The developer has to do one or the other of those things. Either a parking lot, which would allow the development, the finishing of the town center, or the additional dwelling units. It can't be a vacant lot. I mean, what is the, that's what I'm not understanding. What?
So that is, that is your question to the staff in the...
I guess that's the question to the staff. Where's the, where, what, how are we trying to get to where we want to go in terms of finishing Villable? Because a vacant lot is not the answer.
So can staff respond to this, please? Stand around. Stand.
So you're correct, Counselor Lehan, in that the developer has a right to develop something on that lot. Initially, they were approved for a mixed-use condo development. And they have instead chosen to put a 24 space, or now 22 space, parking area on that to serve the mixed-use development as well as the larger community.
And I would just say, from a retail standpoint, when you're in a confined area like that, it's desirable to have your employees to park off-site because the on-street parking in front of retail is the most valuable parking for any retailer. I'm guessing that that's probably one of the factors in the applicant's decision. But he can speak to that if you have questions of it.
And Counselor Lehan, this is Miranda Bateshall, Planning Director with the City of Wilsonville. It's, in terms of your question, there really aren't trade-offs or decisions we can make related to what we would want to see there at this point in a project. An applicant comes forward and applies and puts together a project based on code and clear and objective criteria that are within that. We evaluate that application based on those criteria. And so, you know, whether staff would want to see a condo there or the original development that was already approved, or this parking lot, we're not really in a position to have a choice. We're not really in a position to, you know, provide kind of our bias or our favor. At this point, what we do is we review the application and determine if that application meets the criteria that's in the code that the applicant is entitled to. If there are items of discretion, then we can talk about those items. That parking lot is permitted as a use. As Cindy noted, parking is an accessory use to residential and mixed-use areas. And then what we do is we ensure that that parking is designed appropriately, that it meets all the site design criteria, as well as access and circulation criteria.
Counselor, that answers my question. Thank you. Okay, thanks. I was gonna make sure we finished that. Thank you. And now I see there is a question from Counselor West.
Um, yeah, is it okay if you ask the appellate a question?
Counselor West, we are on the section of the hearing which I have specific protocol for, which is...
Please let me...
But I will, I will, let me check with our parliamentarian on this. Ms. Jacobson, can you advise, I mean, we moved into the questions with staff, and...
It's really, it's at your discretion.
Is this a question from Counselor West to the appellant?
It's at your discretion if you want to go back to the appellant or the applicant as long as the hearing is still open. Once the hearing is closed, then all questions are closed. The way we originally structured this was to ask at the end of each presentation. But there, legally, if you want to allow questions back to the applicant or the appellant.
I can ask the city the same question. The city might be the answer.
Well, thank you. So, you know, I want, we are, so you just now, as I look for the question, look for the clarification, you have now said that you would like to ask the staff your question. So if that...
I'm trying to make it simple. I think I can go either way and get the answer. So if we're at the staff, I can stay that way. I don't want to overcomplicate things.
Well, go ahead and ask your question of the staff and tell me if you have more information.
Okay. I just, I just, and I, I want to know if there, in the appellate's application, in any point that has the staff seen any criticisms or critiques that show that the applicant has not followed the code or the standard laid before him? I think we all know that, you know, fundamental to American constitutionality is we have personal property rights. And if you meet the code requirements, the prescribed menu, the owner of that property can do with it as he sees fit, as he wishes, he or she wishes. And so I'm trying to see, it sounds like that the appellate said that they had submitted or spoke to specific instances in the code that they felt like were violated. I'm not clear what those are. And I didn't know if anybody knew specifically what those accusations of the code being violated was or is.
Again, Planning Director with the City of Wilsonville, Miranda Bateshall. I'm not sure if you can see me. I think the video may have gone away. So I just wanted to note that staff's review of the case file is that all of the criteria and standards that are identified were met. The two or three code standards that flashed up on the screen this evening, I didn't have time to quite note the numbers for those. As they were brought up in the hearing and on the record, they were about the access, as well as whether parking is an allowed use. And both of those things are allowed. Access is already granted. It's already entitled for this property. So in terms of access itself, that has already been given by prior applications with the city and an easement that's already recorded. And so then we look at the design of that. That is something we reviewed. Design conditions were put on the alley, and the parking lot is designed up to the code criteria that's in the code. And as I noted before, parking is an allowed use listed in that code section 4.125, Section 2.
That answers my question. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lindell?
I just have a question for Ms. Luxoy or for Ms. Bateshall. And that is, I know that it's in the record somewhere because I read it. But if there was to be a multi, a mixed-use residential facility on Lot 12, there were, I believe, was it 12 units that were originally proposed for that area? And I guess my question is, if that was approved, with the number of units that was originally envisioned for, what would be the number of parking spots that would be required for those residents?
I'm gonna grab something. Just give me a moment, please. I have the previous decision.
Okay.
So the previous decision, which was in August of 2018, let's see. So it actually proposed one detached mixed-use row house and two detached additional row houses, residential, not mixed-use, on the property. Let me see here. And for that, a total of five spaces were required. Let me see. I should correct to five spaces. The proposed design provided six spaces in garages, four off-street spaces on the alley side of Track A, and four spaces along the alley in Track B. So there were eight, four diagonal spaces, where originally for the current application, the diagonal spaces were proposed. There were an additional four spaces to the west of where the parking area is going to be, or is proposed. And then an additional four spaces in the garages of the units. Let's see.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counsel President Akervall?
Thank you. Question for staff. And we previously heard that there is an easement in this area and that that had already been given. So in the alley, are private property, correct?
Alleys are not public streets, if that's what the question is.
Okay, yeah, they're not public streets. Okay. So is there, our process, our criteria? You know, we've heard questions about a study or that there was no study showing the access. Do, does our process require? Or does it, is this a normal course of action for us to do a study on non-public streets that have this type of easement, the alleyways?
Thank you, Counselor Akervall. To be honest, it isn't clear to me the specific study request. My understanding from the Development Review Board meeting was that the request was for a parking study. Parking studies are not a required component of the development review application process. So we do not conduct parking studies for every development application that comes through. We do require transportation, a traffic impact analysis for every development that comes through. And so that is a course of action for every development application. In addition, we look at circulation and design. We need to make sure there's safe access and circulation. That's also coordinated with the fire marshal. All of our application procedures were done. As noted in this case, fire and emergency vehicles take access off the public street as opposed to the private alley. But we still coordinate with them on these applications. And we had no concern from service providers.
Okay. That was gonna be my next question. Thank you. Thank you. I have a question. And this is regarding the practice of the Development Review Board and just kind of how things go in those meetings where there is sometimes a compromise suggested or an idea brought up. And we have, so I wonder if, you know, for, in this case, one of the ideas was the, who really, with the goal that was stated of, perhaps this would really reduce the traffic if instead of just having it being a parking lot that had a sign that said, "Parking, go this way," it would be reserved parking for certain residents and certain businesses. And I remember in reading the transcript that I believe the traffic study person said, you know, that generally in history or practice of these things reduces the activity in a parking lot by a certain degree. It's in the transcript. But then they talked about it, and it was asked of the applicant if they would accept that idea. And they did accept that idea. So if staff could advise in the force of doing these kinds of meetings where, you know, problems or challenges or, you know, different ideas are being looked at, and then a new idea is brought up and accepted to be a condition of approval, what is the next step after that meeting to make sure that that new condition happens? So that would be, in this case, you know, having reserved parking, and how do you manage it? And they talked about having a tow truck and various things. So you can't do everything in that meeting at night. So how does that get carried out?
Thank you, Mayor Fitzgerald.
Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
I believe so, yes. Let me attempt an answer, and you can let me know if you have any follow-up. So in terms of additional conditions, those conditions of approval get recorded with that decision. They're a part of the record. Those conditions are then attached to the notice of decision that goes out the following... Those conditions are then attached to the notice of decision that goes out the following day. When that notice of decision is issued and sent, those conditions are sent to the applicant. The applicant signs them. That's their acknowledgement and agreement that they will follow through with those conditions. Some of those conditions need to be done at time of getting a public works permit. Some need to be done at time of plat. Some are done at the time of getting final occupancy. And so essentially at those different phases, staff is responsible for reviewing and ensuring that those different conditions of approval have been completed. And typically, the final sign-off is at that certificate of occupancy. So when that final occupancy is issued, we as the planning staff and me as the planning director are on the line to ensure that the conditions are met. And if they are not met, then we work with the development team to do so, so that they can get their final occupancy. So that's how those are met. In this situation, it'll be, to some degree, up to the applicant's team on how they best want to manage that or permit that, and we will ensure that there's some type of organization in place to ensure that that is managed properly. So a lot of times, like in a neighborhood, it's an HOA. Here, it's an HOA or some type of management company.
And could you clarify, I remember reading in the record, but without taking enough time for me to search for it, it does say in the record, the question was asked, who would be managing this? And as I recall, it is the organization, company that manages those residential and retail buildings that would be responsible for that. Is that right?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Unless there are further questions for staff, may I have a motion to close the hearing?
Your Honor, I move to close the hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Thank you. Motion has been moved and seconded to close the hearing. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I'm going to go to the next section of this, and I'm going to recognize our parliamentarian and city attorney who's been there with background on procedures here. So please, I mean, thank you for this, and please let me know if there's any other step we need to do here.
Sure.
But as is our standard protocol, I will ask for a motion and second for an order to either affirm, reverse, or modify the DRB decision just as a starting point. And once the motion is made and seconded, we will have a discussion. Making the motion or seconding does not bind either motion maker to voting for that motion. It is simply the mechanism for starting the discussion. Before we go to the next step, Ms. Jacobson, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that was a good summary. So we just need a motion, one way or the other, from a member of the city council and a second, then we'll discuss.
Council President Ockervoll. I recognize Council President Ockervoll.
Thank you. To bring us into discussion, I move that the Wilsonville City Council order the decision of the DRB, including all findings contained in the staff report adopted by the Development Review Board. Be affirmed and further direct the city attorney to prepare additional findings based on this council's determination for review, approval, and signature by the mayor.
Do I have a second? The motion has been made and seconded, and I will now open it up for discussion.
Just, Mayor, for the record, can you note who seconded the motion?
Oh, the motion was made by Council President Ockervoll and seconded by Councilor Leeham.
Thank you.
So I will now open the matter for discussion. Maker of the motion. We'll recognize the maker of the motion first, Council President Ockervoll.
I'll jump in there. Thank you. And I'm also viewing that our clock is at 9:50, which I believe we may need to have a motion to continue if we extend past 10:00 PM. We could ask the city attorney if that's correct and at what point it's appropriate to address that as well.
That is correct. And since you've only got 10 minutes, it might, you can also, if you want to, before you go on to discuss the motion that's on the table, you can extend your time if you'd like to.
Okay. Then I will first move that we extend our meeting until 10:30 at this point. We'll take that as our first pass.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion to extend the meeting until 10:30 PM has been moved and seconded, moved by Council President Ockervoll, seconded by Council West. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
I'll discuss.
Aye.
Aye.
I think everybody's gonna vote for it, but, yeah.
Council President Ockervoll.
Thank you. And I was hearing some comments from our city attorney.
Oh, I was just going to say, before the vote, we typically ask if there's any discussion on the motion, but it happened and everybody voted for it, so I think that covers it.
Seems like we all want to hang in there for a bit longer, and I do think that is the case. So, thank you. You know, I think the question of if this is an appropriate use for Lot 12 under our code, I think that we have been supplied information that this is an appropriate use under our current code. I am concerned that members of our community didn't feel that they could contribute to the process that our DRB does, because I think that's a very important piece for our city. However, in reviewing the transcript, I'm not seeing that, and taking into account the comments that we heard earlier from the appellant, that isn't really our, not our decision piece for tonight. However, I think it is an important communication dialogue for us to have with our community, that we do care about hearing from our community members. And I do believe that projects are better when we have feedback and when we have more people involved. And I think that is the case with the conditions of approval that were added throughout the two DRB hearings that took place. And I'm glad to see those conditions of approval put into place and that dialogue that led up to those happening. So at this point, I'd like to hear from my fellow council members too, on their views of the matter.
Councilor Leeham.
Yes. Okay, yeah. Having been involved in the Vilbois, development of Vilbois since, I don't know when, 1995, there's probably not a piece of land on, in Oregon with more conditions for approval and restrictions than Vilbois. We have, over time, over the last 20-some years, we have been, we have adapted those and changed those and made adjustments where, because it's hard to look out 20 years and say, here, this will be perfect going forward. But we have to look at the vision as a whole and where that was. And when you have landowners who have committed to that, who have made investments and commitments based on the plan that you said was the plan and you said these are the restrictions, then we have to have a very compelling reason to say, even if you follow the plan, we don't like it and we won't let you do it. That's pretty capricious of us. And that's why we have so much process built into this with the DRB and developers who, for the most part, have been very cooperative, made changes when necessary, adjustments when necessary. But, you know, we are open to discussion for things when there's a good reason for them to change, and we've done that multiple times. But we have to be very cautious on a, in terms of private property rights that we have already restricted as much as we have in Vilbois, and then say, you know, we changed our minds again, and you can't do what we told you you could do. So that's where I am with it. It's not that I'm not open to change when there's a compelling reason to do so, but this doesn't seem to rise to that level.
Thank you, Councilor Leeham. Councilor Lindell. It's always a difficult thing when our citizens feel the need to come and appeal to the city council. I think it's a reflection of their, I mean, obviously, it rises to an area of great concern when that happens. And I want to thank our citizens for utilizing that process. That's what it's there for. And although I've not been on the council as long as others, I know that it doesn't happen very often. And the process that we have is one of really determining based on what has happened at those hearings, whether, in fact, there was something that was done incorrectly, whether it was a legal issue or if it was an issue based on what we saw in the record that would lead us to remand it back, generally remand it back to the DRB for reconsideration or for us to make changes. Our process in the City of Wilsonville is to have, and I know that there are a couple of us who have served on the DRB, and our role in that situation was to be the voice of our citizens and to make sure that we afforded the opportunity for our citizens to be heard and really to hold our city staff accountable for ensuring that decisions are made in accordance with the code and according to a legal procedure. I, while I'm sympathetic about the issues that have been raised by our citizens that have to do with their home values and the issues of safety, I know that we're not always happy about what might happen within our neighborhoods and the impact that they have on us. We see that happen when there are developments and there's structures that are put up that on a legitimately owned piece of property that people, neighbors, believe will have a negative impact on the value of their own. That doesn't allow us to take away the rights of that property owner to do what legally they have every right to do. So I, while I'm very sympathetic and I appreciate our citizens coming forward and all of the work that was done by the DRB, I just don't see anything in this transcript that would lead me to believe that we need to overturn the decision of the DRB. So those are really my comments. Thank you, Councilor Lindell. Councilor West?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank the applicant, well, the appellate for going through this process and doing whatever they can to use their voice and try to be heard. That's not an easy thing to do, to engage, and I'm really grateful that you did. And I do want to make sure that, as a city, that we always err on the side of making sure that our neighbors are heard. And I know I can speak for the council, that we want to hear from our neighbors on any issue that concerns local city government. And we're not always perfect, and we don't always get it right, but I know that that's our desire, is to always hear from our neighbors. And they can bring regress before us, they can be dissatisfied with us as elected, or they can support us, whatever they choose, but we want them to engage nonetheless. And so I do want to thank you for going through this process regardless the outcome. And hopefully, we can even do better in making sure we can always find ways to hear from our neighbors and our community. One of the bedrock principles of our country is the protections around and the personal rights around personal property. And if I could see any reason that the applicant did not meet the required code for the use of his private property or their private property, then it would be within the authority of this council and individuals on this council to vote to uphold the code even at the expense of the applicant. However, I just am not seeing that burden being met at this time. And I, it looks like that the applicant has met that burden of evidence and has done everything necessary to use the property within the allowance as he sees, as he wishes. And so I don't think it's within the authority of this council, or I don't have the authority as an elected to do nothing but uphold a code that was put in place through a legislative process and was voted on and that everybody adheres to. I empathize deeply with the neighbors that live in Vilbois here, where I live, but I just am not seeing the authority that I have to not support the applicant's desire to use for that space. And I'm bound by that. And I think that that's kind of what's gonna inform my vote, is the proper authority that I have as an elected. And if the process was adequately followed, and if it was, I don't have any place restricting the use of that personal property. So, but I do want us to continue to have a conversation, how we can always do better to hear from our neighbors and community, and we will always strive for that. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Councilor West. Well, we've all had a lot of discussion here. We've heard a lot, not only tonight, but at the previous Development Review Board meetings. And I think I concur with everything that people said here. And I also live in Vilbois and have for a long
people said here, and I also live in Villbois, have for a long time, and I think, you know, we need to, it's very important to me that we do listen to our citizens, and I appreciate, you know, just think of all the people who have been involved in this, including all of the citizen members of the DRB, who I know put in a considerable amount of time to really read an incredible volume of material. I'm sure the appellant has put in an incredible amount of time as well, as well as the applicant. So there's been a lot of study of our code and the intent and meaning of our neighborhoods. I also, so I want to thank the applicant for taking time to make some adjustments. No one, there's nothing the city can do to kind of try to get somebody to build buildings. They just, it might sit there for a long time until somebody decides they're going to make an application. So that, you know, is how this started, based on the code, and it's been going on for many years, as we said. It started, you know, we've had all these economic ups and downs and various things that have happened as our economy and different things have changed. The appellant and all the neighbors have also put in a lot of time, and I would say even going back to 2018, when the last proposal was developed, and we see in the record that a lot of citizens came forward and basically, in reading the record, they had overwhelming testimony in previous meetings and public meetings from other areas within the village center, to the north and east of the Piata, concerns about not enough parking, and a lot of it, you know, it just, you know, so there were these groups and various different opinions that have all come into play here, and they all count, and they really do all count. And I want to also say something about our citizens who are on the Development Review I know that they share the opinion of wanting to hear people, and I've read this transcript very carefully, and it, I'm sure, it looks to me like their intent was to listen to people. They had two hearings, they continued it, they heard more, and there's another factor here on Oregon state law, is the amount of time required. There's a certain time period for this whole process, when you have to go start to finish. So I appreciate that we did have this much input, and looking forward, we're going to take a vote soon. I also will say that I believe that the DRB has satisfied the work of determining that the application has met the code. But then, going forward, there are many steps to cover all the bases and make sure that all of that is managed, and I think there's very good intent to manage it well, and I have faith that we will continue to try to do that. So with that, unless there are any other counselors willing to comment, I will call the question. No other comments. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the DRB decision based on the evidence presented to the DRB. I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Council President Kristin Ockerbaum. Counselor Charlotte Leeham.
Yes.
Counselor Ben West.
Yes.
Counselor Joanne Linville.
Yes.
And I, as mayor, also vote yes. Having, are there any votes no? Obviously, we've all voted. So the motion carries five to zero. I want to add one more thing that's important to this type of hearing, and that is that if you desire to appeal this decision to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, you must make applications stating the grounds of the appeal in the form and within the time prescribed by state law. So at this point, I'm going to confer again with our parliamentarian, our city attorney, and ask for input on the next step.
So you've ordered the DRB decision to be affirmed, and according to Council President Ockerbaum's motion, we'll draft up that order, which will include the findings that you just made here now. And she presented her motion in the way that I'm to draft the findings, and then I should present them to the mayor to review and approve the findings and sign the order. And that would happen, we could do it tonight, or I could draft it tonight and give it to the mayor tomorrow, because I understand there's a delegation by the other members of the board to give to the mayor to approve those findings after she reviews them, if she agrees with them or tell me how to correct them. Or I can go and try and draft that now, and then you can all look at it and decide whether you want to approve it. So it's your call.
Well, I think it's a pretty clear order.
I think it's pretty--
Counselors, would you like to, would the counselors like to proceed with having the city attorney draft these orders as stated by Council President Ockerbaum when she made the motion, and I will sign the order, or do you want to recess and wait for that to be done?
I like the idea of you signing the order and she's getting it to you as proposed, either you can sign it tomorrow or later, but I don't know if we need to wait to all review it. That's, I like the idea where we don't have to wait.
It's very straightforward.
Yeah, it is.
I agree with Counselor West.
Thank you. So we will proceed?
So it's--
We will proceed as, excuse me?
It sounds like I will draft the order and send it to you in the morning, you can take a look at it, and if I get anything wrong, you can let me know and we'll make it match what you found tonight.
Well, I expect it to be correct, but we have the motion to refer to.
Yeah.
And I thank you, thank everyone, and I want to also say that I wish everybody to have a good time away or here at home with their family for the Thanksgiving holiday, and for all of the people involved, we'll look forward to good outcomes, and thank you for all of the changes and accommodations to get us to this point. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:13 PM. Okay, Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thanks, David.
Good night, everyone, Happy Thanksgiving.